Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for pledge allegiance and I ask that you remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we -- a moment of silence, especially for someone that truly loved the flag and what it stood for, and that is Ernie Nash, who passed away on January 29th at the age of 84. He was born in Virginia. Ernie resided in Madison for over 50 years. Proudly served his country in the 101st Airborne as a paratrooper during the Korean War. Ernie was the owner of Honor Tree for more than 50 years. His blue trucks could be seen throughout Madison, maintaining our street trees or working for many Madison residents. As mentioned in his obituary, Ernie didn't finish much school, but he finished every job he started. As someone who fought for our country, is very proud of our flags, I mentioned, his trucks all proudly displayed that flag. And his son told me that, as he was recovering a care one this past year, he looked out the windows, saw tattered stars and stripes, and within 24 hours, there was a new flag. Ernie made sure it was there. Ernie was also frugal, driving his 1970's era station wagon until it could go no longer, and who knows how many rotations the old odometer that car had. And personal note, I miss sitting down with Ernie at Main Street Subs, as he never held back on any thoughts to improve Madison. Also, as in his obituary, he was well-respected, a love-family man, always helped anyone in need. And one story was when he was told of an elderly Madison resident's need, who had a tree that was posing danger. Ernie quickly sent a crew, the tree was removed, and the senior with limited means never saw a bill. She assumed a saint had covered the cost of that, and yes, it was Saint Ernie. It is said that Ernie had three loves: his family, his grandchildren, and the tree company. He leaves behind the thriving Honor Tree service, his wife Evelyn, his children Sandy and Chris, along with six grandchildren he was predeceased by his son Ernie Jr. And in our moment of silence, let's also remember Eleanor Mantone, longtime Madison resident, wife of former borough employee, late Paul Skeeter Mantone; Jim Casola, a founding member of the Community Garden Advisory Committee and the Raspberry King at the Community Gardens; also Michael Spanky-Bumgartner, lifelong resident of Madison, and brother of former borough employee Jim Bumgartner, and nephew of former mayor Betty Bumgartner; and also a moment of silence for Catherine Osborne, mother-in-law of our borough clerk Liz Osborne. So let's take a moment. Liz is with family tonight, so moving up to the big table is Ray Cody to serve as our administrator and clerk at the same time, so thank you for stepping up, Ray.
No problem.
There are no minutes for approval, so welcome all. Welcome home, Bob Landrigan. It's great to see your face here. Couple of things I just want to cover. On January 31st, we had the annual committee leadership training at Chatham Borough Hall. It's the third time we did it with Chatham Borough, and the first time that Chatham Township joined. It was a great training for our volunteers, and great for our committee leaders from three towns to get together. And thank yous go out to Chatham Borough for hosting, and also to the clerks that did the presentation, and that is our own Liz Osborne, Robin Klein of Chatham Borough, and Greg Lacant of the Township. And on February 2nd, I presented a proclamation at the 5 o'clock mass at Saint Vincent's to my senior George Hunt, recognizing his 10-year anniversary as a pastor at Saint Vincent's. The proclamation, in case it didn't show up on your calendar, declared February 3rd as Father George Day in Madison. And as I mentioned at that service, it was hard to believe it's already 10 years, but at the same time, it's hard to believe it's only been 10 years, because he has accomplished so much with the school expansion, the renovation, restoration of the beautiful church, and being such a key part of our community. And this past Friday, there was a little celebration of my retirement from the YMCA, and I want to thank all those that attended. It was great to have so many friends in attendance, and it was a great night, and at some point, when I have a lot of time, I'll go through all 48 years of memories. And our Employee of the Month of February is Teresa Delvecchi. And let me just quickly read the nomination form, because this really is a great one. Teresa is our administrator, administrative supporter, and she does an amazing job. As Teresa's position holds lots of responsibilities and stress, she always maintains a professional composure. And it's these two people right here that put a lot of stress on her. She's an asset representative of borough government, since she's the first person the public encounters when they want to see the mayor or administrator, whether it's business or a complaint. Despite all the juggling she has to do with scheduling meetings, weddings, composing correspondence, handling phone calls, writing proclamations, she always has a moment to spare when someone comes into office and seeking assistance, and despite the interruptions, she's always pleasant about it. There are endless deadlines she has to meet, because she is so well-organized, because I'm not, and so she does an amazing job. And as written here, the only time Valerie Walters nominated her, said she's ever stressed when she's leaving ShopRite during her lunch hour, so I can understand that. So if you see Teresa, please congratulate her and thank her for all she does. All right, reports from committee. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Public Safety, one moment.
Wait. Finance.
I would like, Mayor, for you to come down, and I'd like the council to come up. You have a surprise.
Should be on.
Here you are. Good, okay. This is a proclamation of the Borough of Madison, recognizing Mayor Robert H. Conley on his well-deserved retirement. Whereas one of 11 children, Robert H. Conley, is a lifelong resident of Madison, where he and his wife Marjorie, also known as TT, have also raised their two sons, Chris and Jack. Whereas Bob volunteered at the Madison YMCA while a Madison High School student, and whereas the YMCA recognized a good thing and hired Bob as a paid employee in 1970, and whereas Bob worked his way up through the ranks, teaching thousands of youngsters the basics of many sports and the importance of good sportsmanship, and whereas hundreds of families each year started the Christmas season, picking out their special Christmas tree at the YMCA lot with Bob's help, and whereas Bob was eventually promoted to Vice President of the YMCA and Capital Projects Director, and is responsible for the many building improvements that have taken place over the years, and whereas Bob has been previously recognized by his YMCA peers as President of Chapter 17 of the Association of YMCA Professionals, and whereas Bob was the face and heart and soul of the Madison YMCA, and whereas Bob has recently retired from the YMCA after 48 years of exemplary service to the community, and whereas Bob will be sorely missed by his staff, YMCA members, and all those he came in contact with daily at the YMCA. Now, therefore, the governing body of the Borough of Madison hereby extends sincere congratulations to Bob on his well-deserved retirement after 40 years of service to our community, and wishes him good health, lots of bike rides, and summers on the beach in Nantucket.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say something?
Not much more I can say, but thank you so much, and it's making me a tear in my eyes, so we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. So Mayor, I do have a report.
And I should say, Council President Bailey, please.
Oh, okay. No problem. So I thought it might be helpful to those who are here tonight, very few, but those who watch our meetings, to hear about the safety in the home from the fire department. The state of New Jersey requires that a certificate of smoke/CO inspection be obtained prior to the resale and/or rental of one- and two-family dwellings. These inspections are not required for multifamily dwellings, which are three or more dwellings. Legal multifamily dwellings are registered and inspected by the state of New Jersey. Three life safety items are required to be properly installed, working and inspected for a smoke/CO certificate to be issued. There are smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, and a fire extinguisher. Starting January 1st of this year, a sealed battery smoke alarm will only be approved, conventional battery smoke alarms will not be accepted. New Jersey Fire Code mandates that when selling or renting a single or two-family house, a 10-year sealed battery smoke alarm must be installed in accordance with code unless the house or dwelling has been issued a certificate of occupancy by the local building department for the installation of electric hardwired smoke or carbon monoxide alarms. Smoke alarms, whether electric or battery, are required to be replaced every 10 years. I mean, I realized when the chief of police sent this, or chief of the fire department sent this to me, that I am sure my house is not in compliance, so I think it's a very good, important thing for everybody to check this out, and it's on the website. If electric hardwired interconnected smoke alarms need to be replaced due to age, they must be replaced with the same electric hardwired interconnected smoke alarms. 10-year battery alarms are not acceptable replacements for hardwired interconnected smoke alarms. Carbon monoxide alarms are required on each level that has sleeping areas. They can be mounted on the ceilings or walls with no height restrictions, but they must be replaced every five years. A portable fire extinguisher shall be installed in all one- and two-family dwellings upon a sale or change of tenancy. And they have to be a certain size, and they can be no bigger than a 10-pound rating. The extinguisher shall be charged, operable-tagged, mounted in plain view within 10 feet of the kitchen, and not mounted behind doors, blocked by furniture, or in a cabinet. I'm not going to ask you guys, are you in compliance? Okay. Inspections. To schedule a certificate of smoke/CO inspection, call the fire department's non-emergency number, which is 973-593-3021. The fee for inspection is $75. A reinspection will occur if any of the above mandates fail, and will result in a $40 fee for each additional reinspection. Certificates are issued at the time of the successful inspection, and you can go to www.firemadisonfd.com and click on Selling Your Home. We also have a senior smoke alarm program. The Madison Fire Department provides smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, battery changes free to the seniors in Madison. This program is co-sponsored by the Red Cross and the Madison Rotary. On-duty firefighters will come to the home, Monday through Friday during business hours, replace batteries in the smoke or CO alarms, or replace the smoke alarms or CO if they have reached their useful age. Fire Department will come out once a year to change the batteries and the detectors. Seniors just have to call us to schedule the appointment. Madison seniors are encouraged to contact the fire department at 593-3021 and schedule an appointment for this free service. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief DeRosa.
And finance borough clerk, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the tax collector's office, first quarter property tax payments were due on February 1st, and the grace period has passed. As such, the interest is now being charged on all past-due balances. Residents are reminded to pay their property taxes as soon as possible to avoid further interest charges. From the tax assessor, the annual assessment cards, and I'll do a show-and-tell, this is what they look like, were mailed out a few weeks ago to every property owner in town. These cards include assessment information on the front and instructions on how to appeal your property taxes on the back. Residents are reminded that tax appeals must be filed by April 1st of this year. This guide to tax appeals, which is issued by the state, is also very helpful. We have copies of it in the council chambers, and you can find it online at rosenet.org. Tonight, our budget presentation will focus on the expense side of the budget. We will also review municipal surplus. The department heads will present their accomplishment, goals, objectives, and capital budgets on February 25th. Then we will have a special budget hearing on March 4th, where we will receive a revised budget and review the strategic planning guidelines. Councilman Ben Wolkowitz was a driving force in creating these guidelines. They really helped the borough to maintain long-term financial stability by using financial metrics and financial targets. I think Ben would be happy to see us utilizing a lot of the strategic planning guidelines in this year's budget as well. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And utilities, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, in the electric department, the department's in the process of inspecting a new 15-kV circuit tie point. This tie point helps us improve the service reliability, linking circuits from one substation to another. It's part of the redundant system that's utilized during outages, substation repair, maintenance, and upgrades. Second, on Shady Lawn Drive, they recently installed cutout boxes on transformers to better isolate outages in smaller areas. This will improve equipment protection, switching ability, and safety, and they'll be adding more of these to the system as part of our regular upgrade project. And finally, they completed safety training. They all attended full protection awareness. And from the water department, on the afternoon of February 5th, there was a water main break on Dean Street. The department was deployed to the area, excavated, and installed a repair clamp without interrupting service to our customers. And on February 6th, one of the staff found the generator at Well E was running. The emergency power had switched on when an electrical failure was caused by a squirrel chewing through the high-voltage lines that feed the pumps well, the Wells Pump, rather. The electric department was called out to make repairs to the wires, and the well was back online by the end of the day, so it was a great job by both teams. Thank you very much.
Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to explain, I had surgery today on my face. Fortunately, they got everything, and hopefully this is the end of my medical reports at Borough Council meetings. I'd also like to point out, we talked about the leadership conference, and I can report that committees in Madison and Chatham have reached out to, the Environmental Commission has reached out to other environmental commissions in Summit, Florham Park, Morris Township, and they are planning a group presentation from AMJAC, which is an organization talking about recycling and other environmental issues. So Madison is leading the way in terms of shared services, beyond shared services. And the Madison Environmental Commission is also having their second Green Forum, the second week of March, with the students. It will be held again at Drew University, and it's always interesting to see what the children come up with as ideas for recycling and getting involved. Earlier tonight, we heard from the engineering department, once again, we are going out to bid to improve roads. Hopefully, those contracts will be in place so that we can start repairing the roads in the spring, when the snow is no longer here. Additionally, water mains in various areas will be updated prior to paving those roads, so that hopefully we pave and we say, "See ya in 40 years." Lastly, Public Works. Public Works has been busy maintaining our fleet of vehicles, you know, taking care of the parks and the fields while they can. As many of you are following, we have a winter advisory. Governor Murphy has declared a state of emergency here in Madison. If you're driving around, you can see that Public Works has already taken steps. We have put down salt paste, the trucks are ready to go, the snowplows are mounted, and crews are in place, and hopefully we will make sure that when you get up to go to work, despite your child maybe not going to school, you'll be able to get out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with the seniors. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, the next meeting is Thursday, February 14th at 2:00 PM. Everyone is invited to attend, it's an open public meeting. The chair and co-chair of SCAC met with the director of senior services to get briefed on programs and obtain her views on SCAC. Some ideas were brainstormed for the committee to consider. The general idea is to pick one or two projects to work on with senior volunteers to increase engagement and involvement. The overall goal is to increase engagement of those in the senior community. And speaking with members, all agree that one or two easy projects to start would significantly to increase engagement, and hopefully, in the longer term, involve more people. The committee will discuss having a SCAC meeting at Rexford-Tucker and organizing and publicizing what would be a good small project. There are a few people who have expressed interest in joining the committee and plan to attend future meetings. A conversation was started with Transoptions, which our mayor is on the board, to potentially partner with SCAC to design and launch a walking program. At the senior center, the Free ARP Tax Assistance Program started on February 6th. Appointments can be made from 9:30 a.m., 10:30 a.m., and 12:30 p.m. A counselor from the State Health Assistance Program to answer questions on Medicare and Medicaid is available on Wednesdays from 9:30 to 12:30. A Handling Stress and Meditation Program will be held on Wednesday, February 13th, by a dietitian and a fitness instructor. They visited residents at Rexford-Tucker to gain information on what they would like to see in future programs, meetings, and trips. On Tuesday, March 19th, a bus trip is planned to the Sands Casino for $30. Departure from Rexford-Tucker at 9:30, Memorial Park at 10:00 a.m. They will return at 5:00 p.m. with a 6:30 p.m. arrival. Two historical bus trips around Madison, and including lunch, are planned for June 1st. Van trips are expanded to twice a month to Target on February 13th, it's already filled, and Short Hills Mall on February 27th, there's only a few seats left. Creating a new seating area in the rear of the Civic Center to include gardening area, volunteers are needed to help build a senior boxed garden. Planned is a walking path to connect the front sidewalks and circle the property and include seating. For the DDC and Director of Business Development, tickets are now available for the Taste of Madison, presented jointly by the DDC, Chamber, and Rotary. It's scheduled for Monday, March 18th, at Brook Lake Country Club. Go to tastefmadison.org to purchase your tickets today. The DDC is planning a new event to be called Rose City Summer Fest, and it's on the calendar for June 15th. More details will be increased, released shortly. At the regular meeting of the DDC on February 21st, the commission will hold a planning session that will include a review of current bylaws and committee structure. The DDC's Marketing and Economic Development Committee has begun work on a new marketing and branding campaign. They are working with local professionals. The committee will seek to establish a defined brand identity to help inform future public relations materials and wayfinding signage. May Day is scheduled for Saturday, May 4th. Information regarding the student art contest and how to volunteer for the event will be available before the end of this month. Chamber of Commerce. Chamber membership is currently strong at 190. They have 35 new members recently added. The Madison Loyalty Rewards Card is being updated, a new card will be available at the end of this month. Chamber Camp Fair, Sunday, March 24th, from 10:30 to 3:00 at the Madison Community Center. The Madison Area YMCA and Madison Harding Soccer League are key sponsors. Other exhibitors include the Madison Public Library, Free Public Library, the Madison Community House, Madison MUD, Moment Institute, a day camp, Think Tutoring, Marstown Beard Day Camp, and Karen is still accepting exhibitor applications. The Chamber's monthly happy hour has been, for those of you interested, has been moved to the fourth Wednesday of each month at Shanghai Jazz, and all are welcome to attend. Upcoming events. Easter Fun Fest is Saturday, April 13th. Sponsors are Cleaners Advantage, Madison Vega Cafe, and Tap into Madison. Ladies Night, Thursday, May 9th, sponsors are Stitch Boutique and Madison MUD. Annual Awards Dinner is Tuesday, June 4th, at the Brook Lake Country Club. Far as recreation is concerned, the framework of the field schedule for spring and summer 2019 has been finalized, in cooperation with all of our primary sports groups, along with the Madison High School and Madison Junior School. There are currently 17 groups slated to use 14 fields. That number is expected to rise as available time is rented to secondary groups throughout the season. Rental revenue for 2018 totaled $43,587, up from the projection of $40,000. Efforts to improve the fields continue, with several projects on the immediate horizon. Prior to opening day this April, contractors are scheduled to add a permanent 50-foot mound to Lucy D. Howard, restore and repaint the foul poles of Sunny Vitality Memorial Field and Rosedale 2, and relocate the Lucy D. Howard outfield fence from 275 feet to 225. These projects should have a significant impact from the aesthetic point of view and in terms of playability. Weather permitting, the 5th to 8th grade ski club will make its sixth final trip to Mount Peter this Friday, February 15th. Finally, everyone is reminded that the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps is offering free CPR, AED certification courses to all Madison Recreation Volunteers free of charge. Classes are held bimonthly on Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. at the MVAC Building at 29 Prospect Street. Please sign up on the recreation page. The Mayor's Wellness Program, met last week, they discussed the InterYellow Program and their participation, which is being held from May 5th through May 11th. Volunteers are needed to help with logistics, setup, et cetera. Saturday evening, May 11th, will feature a yellow party dinner at the Community House. The next meeting is tomorrow at the Harding-Hartley Dodge Memorial. Healthy, and anybody's invited to attend, by the way. Healthy Cooking, teach how to cook healthy breakfast, lunch, and dinner, every other week, starting March 19th, for four sessions. The Fitness Crawl is targeting Sunday, mid to late September. Four la cows seem to be optimal. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Ms. Cohen.
The Madison Health Department, health screening for adults include blood analysis, women's health, and men's health. Details and appointment information will be posted on Rosenet, or call the Health Department for additional information. New Jersey flu season continues through March 31st, it's not too late to be vaccinated. A reminder that a supply of free radon and lead testing kits are available at the Health Department, 28 Walnut Street. Please stop by or call for more information. And in addition, the New Jersey Poison Control Center has announced that their medical experts want to warn residents that carbon monoxide detectors don't malfunction as often as people think, and please pay attention if your alarm should go off and follow proper precautions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
None, Mayor.
Good job, Liz.
Good job.
All right, we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This is the one that's limited to agenda discussion items, and also the consent agenda resolution items. I will go through them quickly for those attending here, and for those that are watching at home, so you know what our consent agenda comprises of. The agenda discussions today are the 2019 Electric Utility Rebate Program, and if moved forward with the recommendation, that's Resolution 81. There's a 2019 budget discussion appropriations, and it should be Madison Avenue Park Survey, and if that moves forward, that's going to be Resolution 85. And the resolutions that are on the consent is Resolution 76, amending the Borough Madison personnel, Borough Madison Policies and Procedures related to vacation, making sure it's consistent between union and non-union. Resolution 77 is for contract purchase of cellphones and tablets under a state contract not to exceed $40,000, and this money is available from accounts 240 and 501. Resolution 78 is Resolution Ratifying a Contract Award for D&amp;B Cleaning for Cleaning Services in Madison Civic Center for an amount of $32,000, and that's in the 2019 budget. Resolution 79, appointing Francis Boardman to the position of Administrative Secretary of Utility Advisory Committee for a stipend of $1,125. Resolution 80 is approving the annual Little League Parade market calendars for Saturday, April 27th, 2019, at 12:00 noon. Resolution 81 is authorizing, again, this is based on a conversation kind of shortly, the utility rebate program, and we'll go into details on the amount shortly. The Resolution 82, granting permission and install plaques at the Museum of Early Trades, and this is at the and this is at the Compass little display there that Unico put in many years ago. This is going to recognize the founding families of Madison Unico. Resolution 83 is authorizing change order and final payment to Midwest Construction for the Greenwood Avenue Reconstruction Phase 1 Project, and this is increasing the amount by $51,971, and money was appropriated in ordinances 1 and 2 of 2018. And Resolution 84, Governors Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, is a grant application. This would be for $12,419 of DETER funds, a cash match from the borough of $3,100, and an in-kind match of $9,300. And Resolution 85 is, would be awarding the contract for the survey at the Madison Avenue Park by the Museum of not to exceed $3,450 pending the conversation about to happen. Anyone wants to comment on any of those or those agenda discussion items, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we move on to agenda discussions. The 2019 Utility Rebate Program, this was co-sponsored by Carmela Vitale and Pat Rowe.
Yeah, I think we both agreed to that. I'd ask Jim to reiterate the numbers, because I didn't bring them with me, but the yes was to have us increase the rebate from $150 to $200 per year. It seems that last year, we saw another drop-off in the number of people applying, so we have a bit more money that's available, and I think it's a worthy cause. We've been increasing it by $50 every couple of years and trying to keep somewhere between $50 and about $75,000, going back to people who need it the most.
I think, for the most part, this has been relatively successful. It took a little while for people to kind of get used to it, but, you know, I see it progressing like really well. In 2018, we had 296 approved applications. They have to conform to certain annual income ranges in order to get this specific $200 electric utility rebate. So, but I see it being very successful, and I think that we're very happy as a mayor and council to give people in Madison this opportunity.
And one final point, it's available to all residents. It's not subject to your age or anything else. If you're a ratepayer and you fall within certain income categories, you could be eligible.
Excellent. Anything to add, or CFO, any other, Maureen?
Yeah, and just for the people watching, we should, we should remark that, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about people that fall under the acronym of ALIS, which stands for Asset Limited. This is, this program shouldn't be confused with the dividend program that we have in place for all the utility, all the people that, you know, get their electricity from Madison. This is specifically for people who are economically challenged, and it'll ask them to play for their electric and not have to worry about feeding their children themselves in the same time.
Any other comments? Okay, this is Resolution 81, as I mentioned already. And now for our 2019 Budget Discussion Appropriations, our CFO, Jim Burnett.
Hey, I believe Carmela's going to lead off here.
All right.
This is basically what the agenda is and what we will be talking about tonight. It's a summary of what the budget includes. The services that you get that are paid for out of the municipal budget. A presentation of the draft budget, which I think there are copies here, looks like this, focused on the appropriation side of the budget. And that includes the breakdown of our department and our expenses. And we will review, you know, the municipal surplus. The next slide talks about transparency, and one of the things that we've been very careful about is to make sure that people understand how often we will be talking about the budget. So usually, we have one sheet budget summary, okay? And this document presents the budget information in a very graphic and simple format, and has been produced since 2015, thanks to Jim Burnett. He made it very easy and simple. The Budget in Brief, this is a one-page budget summary, which is available here tonight. And that's also been, that was created in 1986, and the format has kind of changed slightly over the last few years. We also have an audit report, and that's a very detailed 100-page document that contains very comprehensive information. Digital copies are online, if you want to take a look at it and read them. But from 2006 to this date, the hard copies back, dating back to 1970s, are greatly available in the Finance Office. The Annual Budget Process, the remainder of this page actually outlines the budget documents and presentations given to the council during the budget process, as well as the schedule of the upcoming budget-related meetings. You could go to RoseNet and click on Financial Documents, and you'll see the listings of the past budgets, the audits, and any other information. So for 2019, we started off Monday, January 28th. Council received a presentation on the utilities budget, including the electric and water. On Sunday, January 27th, Jim, on a Sunday, presented the annual debt statement and was filed with the State of New Jersey, State of New Jersey Division of Local Government Services. On Monday, January 14th, the council already discussed the budget schedule and Open Space Trust Fund. A revised five-year capital plan was presented to the council and discussed as well. An ordinance for the 2019 road reconstruction and milling and overlay were also introduced as well. So, if you want to read more or learn more about the budget process, you know, just go to the Annual Budget Process page on RoseNet, and you could find anything that you need from there. So here's the budget schedule. November, we started in November. We had a hearing on a $4,770,000 bond ordinance for the Madison Joint Meeting, which is our sewer, our sewer authority. December 10th, there was a draft of a five-year capital plan. January 14th, again, we talked about open space and revised the five-year capital fund. January 23rd, we talked about the annual debt statement submitted to the state. January 27th, we did an unaudited annual financial statement submitted to the state. January 28th, utilities performance. So tonight, we're at February 11th, Initial Budget Discussion and Surplus Discussion. At the end of this month, at our next meeting, February 25th, we're going to have all the department heads here, and they'll be talking about their operating and capital budgets. March 4th, at 7:00 p.m., there's a special meeting, and that's a Revised Budget and Strategic Planning Guidelines. Thank you, Ben Walkovitz. And prepare the official state budget document. On March 25th, the official budget is introduced, and on April 22nd, the official budget hearing and adoption. We're doing very well. The administration starts on this early on in August, so we're in very good, very good strait right now. So the budget includes the following. There's no change to the services for the residents. Extra funds for recreation and field improvements. Funds to replace one retiring firefighter. Budgeted dollars to replace two public work staff. Continue focus on public information and transparency. Increased insurance coverage limits. Additional money in the legal budget for the affordable housing litigation. Extra dollars in planning budget for a master plan update. Extra $100,000 for the library. And an aggressive capital investment plan. So we're ready, I guess, for Jim to kind of explain to us what exactly is going on in our draft budget.
I'm going to just talk real quickly about two points. The extra dollars to the library are driven by the mill rate, which is a state mandated calculation based on equalized assessed values over a number of years. It's a math calculation. They go, here's what you have to give the library, and it went up by $97,000 this year. So that's, that's why the library is getting extra funds. And the increase in insurance coverage limits, working with the JIF, we realized that our liability coverage was a little below maybe what it should be. We spoke to them. It was a very nominal increase, which is shown in the budget. We're like, of course, let's bump it up. So that's just good risk management. So that's included in the budget. A little quick did you know, which was on the one sheet budget summary sent out with the tax bills earlier in the year, a house valued at $667,200 received a 2018 property tax bill of $12,830. The municipal portion of that bill was $2,889, and residents received garbage and recycling, recreation and parks maintenance, fire department and fire safety, sewage treatment, fire hydrants and streetlights, yard waste and fall pickup, senior citizen services, police department and crossing guards, health department, Free Public Library, plowing and maintenance of over 50 miles of roads, and all the various departments that are more operation administrative, health administration, finance, elections, records, construction, planning, and zoning. So that house for $2,889, all those services. This is the draft budget. There are printed copies. There'll be copies available online as well. As Carmela mentioned, we're going to focus on the appropriations or the expenditure side of the budget this evening. Salaries and employee-related expenses account for over 46% of the budget. That's line 16 on the budget, along with health insurance and pension unemployment. Those lines 16 to 17, 18, and 19 add up to 46% of the budget. So it's worth spending a few minutes just really quickly looking at those. As Carmela said, in terms of transparency, all the payroll data is available on RoseNet. Employees' gross earnings reflect the W-2 reported gross income and include base pay along with step increases, longevity, overtime, and standby. They also include for police department outside duty. So if the police are hired by PSENG or JCP, PSENG to do gas work downtown, Greenwood Avenue, we don't pay for that, that is reflected in the salaries that are listed here. So getting more granular with that, we looked at each department and the number of employees that were in that department, and then the average gross earnings. We just did a little chart here. I'm not going to go through it. It's there, and it's available, but just for people to see the average gross earnings. Keeping in mind that the, that it is, that it includes all of the K's, but it does not include benefits. So it doesn't include pension, health, social security, and other related employee costs. This is purely what was paid to the employee. And as I mentioned before, the police earnings also include items partially paid or completely paid by others. Another good example is court security. That's paid for collectively by the five towns in the joint court, so we don't pay for that entire amount, but it's reflected in the dollar amounts that you see for police officers listed. So a little bit about health insurance, just highlighting the line in the budget. Both employees and employees and employers contribute to health insurance. The borough pays the following. In 2018, we paid 2.4 million. There were 104 employees in the system, so the average cost per employee was $23,000. The cost is funded through the current fund, the electric utility, and the water utilities. So don't look at that and go, hey, wait a minute, Jim, your number before just said one number, but this is something. That's a combination of all three of those budgets where that number is. And also, in 2018, employees contributed over $660,000 in additional pay, so our health insurance total cost over $3 million. 2.4 million that we paid, and over $660,000 that was paid by staff. Pension is line 18 in the budget that we have presented. And a little bit about pensions, there are two pension systems, the employees' retirement system and the police and fire retirement system. PERS is the system that is for all non-police and fire, so it's for administration, construction, and all those staff. This is a defined benefit plan. It means that the employee receives a monthly dollar benefit based on a percentage of their final average salary. An IRA or a 401K is a defined contribution plan. So this is defined benefit. IRA would be defined contribution. The borough pays the following. We have 40 people in the police and fire retirement system. We paid a little over $1 million in 2018. It went up significantly by almost $150,000, over $140,000 in 2019. We had 40 people in the system. Now we're up to 42 people in the system. The average cost for employees, $27,600. PERS is the retirement system for all other employees. There are 100 in 2018 members, there are 98 now in 2019. The amount went from 973,000 to about 110,000. So the percentage increase in PFRS was significant. 140,000 on $1 million is almost 14%. PERS is almost about a 5% increase. You can also see the dollar amount for the 2009 cost per employee for PERS is a lot less. So the question is, why? Police officers, when they retire, can, after 25 years, can immediately receive their full pension, so there's no age requirement. So a police officer hired at age 22 can retire when they're at age 47 and immediately receive their full monthly pension benefits for the rest of their lives. A PERS employee, non-police and fire, cannot receive their full pension until 60 or 65, depending on when their date of hire was. The borough's PERS bill, as I mentioned before, is split between electric, water, library, and municipal operating. So the reason that PFRS is so expensive is because it's a much, employees are going to get paid for many more years. A lot more. So I'm just looking at the notes here.
And the police are not in social security.
That's correct. So when you look at, in other areas, and I don't talk about it specifically, but when we go to department costs, I add a load factor on. The load factors are almost similar, because while the pension costs are so much more expensive for the police and the fire, it's offset by the fact that they're not paying, and we're not paying into the social security for them. So as an example, the police and fire receive 70% of the last year's salary as pension. And so if you were to take a police officer's salary of, which is $111,000 for the top end of a regular police officer, for a patrol officer, $122,000 for a sergeant, and it's $111,000 for a firefighter lieutenant, when you add in the $27,000 for the pension, and then earlier I talked about $23,000 as the average cost for health insurance, if you just add those two together, the all-in cost for a firefighter or a police officer is over $170,000. So now, Mayor alluded to, we want to take all the department costs together and merge, kind of mush them together, and then break them out by department. So we're going to take salaries, health insurance, pension, all these different amounts, and break them down into departments, so you can see the breakdown. I will go point one little thing out, because I might have a question on it. Hey, Jim, line 21, department operating expenses going up by 2.8%. We won't get into it later on, so we'll just say now, what bumped that up? We had talked earlier about recreation getting an extra $25,000 for field maintenance. We talked about planning getting extra dollars. So those are the kind of the main drivers that increased that by $96,000. So the largest departments that we have in terms of appropriations, when you add in salary, pension, load factor, and everything, are listed here. The police at 6.3, Department of Public Works at 4.2, Fire Department at 2.7, garbage and recycling, 1.6 million, library at 1.5, and sewage treatment at 1.1 million. Keep in mind that police and fire are a 24/7/365 department. They're on shifts. Obviously, the finance department's only one shift during the day during the week, so... And in this particular, on these particular appropriations, we did take health pension, social security fringe benefits, and rolled that all in with the salaries, with the department operating budget, to kind of get this all-in number. It's then reflected here to show a greater listing of all the departments. It's then reflected here to show a greater listing of all the departments, their percentage of the total appropriations, and the relative size of departments, construction versus library versus utilities and fuel and engineering. Not gonna get into any great detail here, but there was nothing of major significance that changed. We'll go over it in the next slide, talk about some of the percent changes, why some were so different. Are there any questions on this slide? I'm kinda going quick, but I don't wanna...
Jim, just one quick question on the, actually, two previous slides. I know our percentage of the joint meeting went down, but you're showing a flat increase. Is that the actual number that they gave you, or is that just 'cause you're holding it steady, in case we have to true up?
Very good question, thank you. So the joint meeting has a unique process of applying surplus differently than we do here. So some years, the amount of surplus, they have surplus just like we do. Some years, they apply a lot. Some years, they don't have a lot, and they apply less. So even though our share went down, two things happened. The amount of surplus to offset the budget was smaller, and the amount of, the budget grew significantly because we're looking to fund more of the phosphorus remediation in that budget. Those two things combined caused the total high that has to be split by the two municipalities to increase significantly. So even though our share, our, based on the flows, went down, we're keeping it the same because, actually, it went up. We're actually gonna pay more this year than we did last year, even though our flows...
It was discussed at the, I guess, January joint meeting, the idea of trying to add another factor to the calculation for surplus usage, and so we can avoid these big swings. And so I would, if you can make sure with Chatham's CFO, we work on that, so it makes it a better cushion. Chatham took a bigger hit than we did, because on a percentage basis, it was significant for them.
Yes, so they had both the bump in the size of the budget, and then the bump in their percentage share. And that's the whole point of having a better surplus policy. Last year, a lot of surplus was used, and their share went up proportionally based on flow, but their dollars didn't go up because the surplus kinda masked that. If we had used less last year, it would've been a little more of an incremental movement for them. So we're looking to develop a policy. We've talked about that internally, and I'd like to introduce that to the board at some point this year. So page 19, the year-over-year change in appropriations. So this is just kind of a three-year change of the departments. The two-year difference from 2017 to 2019 for the police was $600,000 or 10%. That's significant. If you recall, last year, we had a pretty major change in the step scale. The step scale was an equally sloping step scale, and last year, we changed it, and that caused salaries to increase for the newer employees at a faster rate. It was important for us to do that, and we explained that to council, that we needed to do that to stay competitive, so we wouldn't lose police officers. You spend a year, a year and a half field training a police officer, and then they leave for another town, because they can make $10,000 more. So that's part of that. And it just gives the list. The only one that kinda sticks out that looks a little goofy is construction. And the reason that went up was because we're shifting expenses out of other departments into construction, so it aligns with the state guidelines. State allows certain expenses to be within construction, and we weren't taking all of those expenses in construction. So a few from other departments were moved into construction. So you see, actually, public works going down a little bit. That's part of it. So the reason we do that is because the state will look at our revenue generated from the construction department and make sure it's somewhat equal to the expenses, so we're not overcharging.
So even with the change we made with the fire inspections, where we moved the fire employee out with fairly significant overhead and replaced it with someone else, the cost still went up that much?
So what I did in 2018, I had already artificially removed them. Even though they were being charged to construction, I still counted them as fire. So that move, while it's being reflected in the way it's charged in admins, the way it's charged against the budget, I had already reflected kind of the true cost of the fire department in 2018. So you're right, so that continued to change, moving the fire inspector that was charged more fully to construction over, isn't reflected here, because I had already balanced that last year.
Thank you.
And support services, it's gone down. What's the difference between admin and support? What is support services?
So support services are recreation seniors, and it went down because we had a higher-priced employee in the senior center, and we had some overage of two employees, and now we have a different employee at a lower cost. That's primarily, good question, the main reason why it went down.
Oh, God.
So, okay. So surplus, I am not gonna read this. Beyond RoseNet, you have it. I think you all have a good understanding as to what surplus is. The bottom line is, we generate surplus because New Jersey accounting law requires the borough to be conservative when we're budgeting revenues and expenses. Strong surplus balances are one of the most important factors that the rating agencies consider when they look at our bond rating. Right now, Madison's AAA because we keep our borrowings down, and we have very strong surplus. So to that end, anybody who wants to learn more about surplus, there's a lot on surplus, both written here, and then there's a great amount written under the strategic planning guidelines that Ben Wolkowitz and his team put together a number of years ago. So I think anyone that wants to really dive into the understanding of surplus should take a look there. So I won't go too deep into it, but I will say that we had an excellent year for surplus. And I'll explain it in a few minutes, but we generated 5.9 million in surplus. That's a $1 million increase in the surplus balances. And the reasons we had it were that we had an excellent year on the revenue side and an excellent year on the expense side. In 2017, department heads did not spend all the dollars that they had in their budget. Those dollars get put in a coffee can. In 2018, we pay out any random bills that might trickle in from 2017 in January, February, March of 2018. At the end of 2018, that lapses into appropriations. I'll show you that in the chart in a few minutes. So we have done a very good job explaining to department heads, you don't need to spend your whole budget. Just spend what you need. You know, there's some mindset, like, if I don't spend, then I'm gonna lose that budget line next year. We've done a very good job, council's done a very good job, letting department heads know that's not the case. We also had two significant revenue bumps this year. Interest rates increased significantly on our bank balances. We also had a big inflow of bank balances, 'cause a lot of people prepaid their taxes at the end of 2017. So we had people's tax dollars for the fourth quarter of 2018. We sat on them, we had them all year long. So we invested those well, and we received an extra $200,000 more than we had anticipated in interest revenue. And then finally, the Green Village Road development, KRE development on King's Road at the old Green Village Road site, it finally came online paying taxes. And that alone generated over $450,000 in surplus. We didn't anticipate any of that. Is this really gonna happen? It finally happened in the middle of the year, and the revenue came flowing in. This upcoming year, we will anticipate it. So in the budget discussions on March 4th, we'll talk about that impact, but the positive revenue impact of that development can't be understated. It's just going to be significant, a significant positive to the borough. So those are the three reasons why surplus kinda bumped up so much.
And under state guidelines, even if we were 100% sure that KRE was gonna generate that, we can't recognize it until it's already been generated one year. We can't anticipate it.
We could if we went through a ton of hoops with the state, and we said, you know what? We really don't know if it's gonna come in. We think it's gonna come in, we don't have to do this. So we didn't. In terms of some of the lapsing appropriations, just to give you an example, on number three, the department's being fiscal responsible.
Wait, one second.
Yes.
So you have, on your slide, you have taxes in quotation, because it really isn't a tax, it's a pilot payment. It's for payment in lieu of taxes.
That's correct.
But if it was a tax, they'd be our number two taxpayer.
Yes, they'd be paying the same amount. It's just that we, as a borough, get to glean a more percentage of that because of the pilot payment that we've established, that we don't have to pay as much to the county and the Board of Education. So under the department head's snow removal, we had $150,000 in dollars in the budget that weren't spent in 2017, that lapsed to appropriations. Board of Health, $115,000. Sewer chemicals, $20,000. $120,000 in garbage tipping fees. You don't really know how much garbage the town's gonna generate, so we have to have a pretty big cushion there. We had $120,000 more in the budget. So at the end of 2018, that lapses into surplus. So to give you an example of what that does, and where we get that from...
So Jim, before you move on, is it possible to get the revenue numbers before March 4th? Because it's hard to evaluate a budget unless you have both sides of the equation and wait a month to hear about revenue. I mean, I saw the, I'm assuming to some degree, this draft budget you gave us, that's in light gray, is somewhat real, and I have a whole lot of questions based on that.
Yes, so we can talk about that offline, but I think the light gray numbers are reliable, are absolutely reliable numbers.
Anyway, if you could go back one more slide, 'cause I have a couple other questions or points. The first is, you know, the great news is, we're generating a lot of surplus. The better news would be a way if we could translate that into more savings for taxpayers, because we already have, when you look at, well, the next slide on my chart, we're carrying $4.5 million of free balance. Depending on what we use in this year's coming budget, that $1 million could just end up sitting in our bank account. I mean, that, you know, I've made the point in the past that we really should take a hard look at how much money we have from year to year that we're not utilizing by behalf of taxpayers. And then the other thing is, I'd like to see a better breakdown of really, not just what the numbers were versus the budget, but what they were versus the previous year or two spends, because we, in some of these items, we always kinda overbudget. But I would like to see whether the trend was truly a one-year, big savings against actuals or just against the budget, because that really tells you where the true savings came in. Anyway, end of those points.
To piggyback on Pat's comments, I think maybe for the, in advance of the March 4th meeting, is to, you know, looking at these numbers, looking at the fact that we now can budget the KRE pilot, looking at the fact that New Jersey residents will be paying more in federal taxes because of limits on deductions that run a scenario with a 0% property tax increase, and make sure we look ahead a couple of years, and so we know it's something that doesn't create the joint meeting type of thing of balances, but something that we could put out to Madison residents, that we hold aligned, because all these things are lining up very well for us.
We'll take a look at it. The strategic planning guidelines that Ben put together would say, hey, you're at the top end of what you're generating in surplus. To Pat's point, we need to find ways to throttle back on the generation of surplus. One way to do that is to realize more revenue. If we realize more revenue from municipal sources, which is, I know it's grayed out, but it's line two, if we realize more in that line, boy, you can't really see it here, well, I apologize, then it goes, it just goes that there wouldn't have to be as much generated in property taxes. So I'm happy to do that. I will offer a couple of options March 4th. So I'm gonna go real fast forward.
And Maureen, you had, did you have your hand up?
Oh, yeah, I did. I think I agree with Pat, I think, and we've talked about that, sort of, you know, taking into account what's coming down three, four, five years, but also trying to smooth that out, so that, you know, we aren't, we aren't, so we have a rainy day fund, but our rainy day fund isn't at the expense of anybody else.
Yeah, the point I was making, though, is our rainy day funds are actually very, very healthy at this point.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't know, $2.5, almost $3 million in electric surplus, unused balance. Right now, we started off last year with $4.5. If we were really throwing this $1 million in, that's $5.5. That's a lot of money. You know, I like to say, and Ben and I used to have a discussion about this, for every $5 million that we're hanging on to that we're not using, you know, it's literally a $1,000 loan in perpetuity from every household in this town. And I don't know if that's the best use of that money. We need some of it, not all of it.
Right.
And I think, you know, that was one of the things I was hoping strategic planning was gonna look at, is like, where should we draw the lines on some of these funds, so that we work our way, you know...
Right, but I mean, previous councils have been in the position where they had no surplus, and then they were unable to do the road reconstruction and the capital programs that are so necessary.
Before I joined council, I sent the council a chart one year that showed how their surpluses were about to go to zero, and they were gonna hit a wall if they, you know, something didn't happen. Luckily for us, the electric utility turned around. It wasn't really luck, but, you know, it worked out. But, you know, we need to, we need to make sure that we're not too low or too high. It's, you know, kinda Goldilocks.
So on March 4th, we'll have the, right up against our strategic planning goals and the various scenarios of...
Show a scenario of what we have, which is currently 2%, we'll show a scenario of zero, and we can talk about those two numbers, and which is attainable and which is best based on strategic planning guidelines and everything else that we're looking for.
And just to highlight for everybody, the line I'm talking about is line 10, the subtotal free balance. So it goes from 2.6, 3.6, 3.8, 3.9, 3.8, 4.4. And again, if we added that $1 million, it'd now be 5.5. 5.5 million, that free balance is money we're not gonna put back into this year's budget. It's money that just sits in a bank account.
It's also money that, to a certain extent, we wanna have from a safety, from a AAA standpoint, from hurricanes and Sandy and everything else, but the strategic planning guidelines are very specific. This is where you need to be. We're kind of at the top. We were at the top last year, and then we kinda now blew through the top.
Well, they just talked about how much we put back into the budget from the surplus, right? They didn't talk about how big the free balance got. They never really addressed that particular issue.
I think there is a guideline that talks about that, so, but we can go over that.
We'll pull that out for March 4th.
Sure.
I'll pull it out somewhere.
So this shows surplus, surplus generation, and what generates surplus. So non-taxable revenue, we talked about that, that's line number one. And for this particular item, why was it so much more than anticipated? We talked about that, the KRE dollars and the interest revenue, for the most part, were why it was more their current year taxes. That's pretty standard. We had, as Carmella reported a couple of meetings ago, 99, over 99% tax collection rate. So we're assuming, because of that not everybody's gonna pay their taxes, we have what's called the reserve for uncollected tax, that assumes about a 97% tax rate. We have more current year taxes, collect more, and generate surplus. Cancellation of prior year appropriations, we talked about, definitely was a really good year, and we talked about snow removal, Board of Health, sewer chemicals, garbage tipping fees, Planning Board, we had a significant amount of dollars in planning professional expenses that aside, 'cause we thought we might be getting close to doing a master plan review. We didn't do it, that was $90,000. So this line here of 2.589 was generated by that, and miscellaneous revenues has stayed relatively steady. So those items are what are generating revenue, and we generated 5.9. So that's kind of like our income statement, what happened throughout the year. This is kind of our balance sheet here. Here's our balance at the beginning of the year of 9.27 million. We used 4.8 in the budget. We generated 5.9. So the balance at year-end is 10.36. We're gonna immediately, we know we're gonna use 4.9 million, 5 million of that next year. So that might look like a high number, but we need to know that half of that's gonna go into the budget next year right away.
Carmella?
Jim, can I just ask you, could we go back to free balance? Because now, Pat put a thought in my head. The free balance is $4,490,000. Is that what we utilize in case there's an emergency?
Exactly.
You know, when you go back and you think about Sandy, and all of a sudden, we needed $1 million, we were one of the few people, and few municipalities, that actually could say, okay, we got $1 million, and we're gonna fix everything. So is that where it's coming from? I mean, we have to keep that pretty safe, don't you think, in the event that...
I agree. I think it's a balance. I mean, as a CFO, I'm always gonna be conservative, so having extra surplus is never a bad thing. It will protect you in case something large and significant happens that the borough needs to attend to. Right now, we think we know what the capital plan needs are gonna be for the next few years, but if something significant happens, it's there. It will get to a point where it's too large, and I think this is the year to talk about that. And I think the 0% tax increase that the mayor has proposed, maybe that's the solution, that very likely could be the solution this year that will throttle back on the amount of surplus that's... amount of surplus that's being generated, give back to the taxpayers, and help, so we don't get to a point where we're just, we're taking in too much money versus what we're, what we're spending.
Okay.
Good point. So, this just shows the balances on surplus, and we're in a very good financial position. I want to thank all the department heads. I want to thank Carmella for helping crafting this budget and Ray Odeon crafting this budget, and we'll talk department heads in two weeks, and we'll talk appropriations on, or I'm sorry, revenues on March, and a 0% tax increase on March 4th.
Any other questions?
Pat? Pat? So, I just want to say, I mean, Jim, I always give you a hard time about all the things in the budget. Not a hard time, I ask hard questions, but you do a great job, and you do a wonderful job of laying all the information out, so it's very helpful to ask those questions. So, thank you very much for that.
I'm going to go all the way back to page six because I didn't realize at that point that we were asking questions as we went along. But you talk about the one-page summary that goes in property tax bills. I'm just going to throw out there, as a renter who pays the property tax through my rent, I don't get a property tax bill, which means I never see that one page, or unless I happen to go to Rosenett or something. I don't know if there's a way to get it to renters. I'm paying the property taxes. People should know where the budget is, but we don't, we don't, I don't see that bill that goes...
Does it go out to utility?
We alternated. Last year was a tax bill, the year before was an electric bill, so maybe we'll put it back in the electric bill this year. So, that's a good way to alternate it. And then we just let people know it's posted on Rosenett.
Is it at the library?
It's at the library. We have it published...
Usually put it on the table, too?
Yep, out on the table. Come to the council meeting and learn about the budget.
Yeah. Sounds good. All right, very well done. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. So, we are at the Park Survey, which was marked as Park Avenue. I said it was Madison Avenue, but I think technically it's Main Street, so it is Main Street there. Well, Lisa, you want to come up and present the idea from the...
Fight your way through the crowd.
Sorry. We like, I like to surprise you every time.
I know. It's just wonderful. Do you have...
It was signed off by John. So, John, were you planning, presenting this, or...
No, I wasn't preparing to present.
Okay. So, Lisa's, yeah, Lisa's ready to do it.
I'm giving my whole heart and support, though.
All right, thank you.
I sent you all a packet of information. I hope it was clearer this time to you. We tried this in last October. If you have any questions, I mean, the point is, the DDC has been trying to get a beautification project off the ground for the area beyond the museum for probably the better part of maybe three or four years. And what we kept running into was the fact that nobody has an up-to-date survey of the property, and really, no one wants to undertake design work until we have that document so we really know where the boundaries are, have a better idea of what the topography is and where the trees are placed, especially because that property backs right up to New Jersey, the New Jersey Transit property. So, we certainly don't want to encroach there, and we all know they're not really going to fix their own property. The other thing is, you know, nothing that's, there's no intent to touch the Columbus Memorial. That's a beautiful thing that needs to stay there. So, I said, it could certainly use a, maybe a new paint job or something like that, and that could certainly be incorporated into the project. We're looking for it to be an interactive space, a beautiful little jewel of a park where we can put perhaps sculpture, seating, picnic area, that kind of thing, just something for people to enjoy. It's certainly an area that has been crying out for some love. Do you have any questions about what I...
So, part of the concept is the fact, as you come from the West, that the Madison Avenue overpass is kind of the gateway to our downtown. So, you'll come in, you'll see on your left the World War I Memorial and Condorsal Way area. On the right, you'll see this Sculpture Garden kind of welcoming you to Madison as you then see our grand, the James Library, our grand museum, the James Building, and the original YMCA building, really creating this great entry to our downtown, and in another way, spreading out the pool of downtown a little bit further west, too, where the, you know, Park Avenue businesses tend to almost be forgotten because they're slight disconnect.
So, you didn't need me to present?
No, that's, yeah, I had to warm up a little bit. Maureen, and then Pat?
So, I think my question tonight is the same one I made a couple months ago. Why is the Downtown Development Commission asking the borough for $3,450? Why isn't the Downtown Development...
Because this is, the property belongs to the borough.
It's a borough property, so we're surveying, just as we've done some other properties, we're surveying our own property. The DDC would then take on the improvements at that site based on that survey.
Pat? Did we, yeah, I knew we were paying for the survey. The DDC is going to take this on. Do we know what their budget is for the park?
No, because we don't have, you know, without a plan, it's really hard to come up with a budget.
I'm assuming they have dollars that they're sort of earmarking in their budget?
No, we haven't, we really haven't gotten that far because we want to involve, you know, it's going to involve a landscape architect. We're not sure, Russell Stern, who is one by trade, has been very interested in this project, and he was, might want to take a crack at it himself, or we're going to have to hire a landscape architect. It could have to be phased over a couple of years. We have, you know, we have a good-sized public improvement budget at the commission, probably about, you know, I think we're around over, little over $20,000. We don't have anything else specifically earmarked for that, so a good portion of that money would probably be kind of put toward this. I just don't know what it looks like yet.
And since it's our property, they'll be coming in front of us to...
Of course, when we have a plan and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All the way, all along the way.
And you're talking about Sculpture Gardens, so, I mean, $20,000 doesn't go a whole long way.
That's the first year. I mean, we need a plan. It's obviously going to have to be phased. You could probably spend half a million dollars on that property if you wanted, you know, to, depending on what the amenities are, et cetera. So, I think it has a, but this is where it needs to start because we can't get anybody to draw a plan when they don't even know what the property boundaries are.
And bottom line is, right now, we will end up minimally with a survey so we know what we can do in the future. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that is Resolution 85 in the consent. We now move on to Item 14, the ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on January 28, 2019. Were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinance 4-2019 for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for Signalization Improvements.
I open hearing for ordinance 4. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 4-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, we're now on to, oh, wait, hi, Mayor, that's me. I declare ordinance 4-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper, file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now, we're on to invitation for discussion number two. This is when the public may comment anything. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. There are no ordinances for introductions, so we're on to the consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 76-2019 to Resolution 85-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, there is no unfinished business. Approval vouchers. Clerk, please read the voucher register.
Current fund, $205,482.08. General capital fund, $247,330.95. Electric operating fund, $188,098.84. Electric capital fund, $76,150.08. Water operating fund, $20,494.90. Water capital fund, $35,966. Trust accounts, $65,071.08, for a total of $838,593.93. Mayor?
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Come on, yes.
Yes. Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, new business. Besides thanking our temporary clerk for a great job, I also would like to make the following appointment, and this was, this was actually reappointment. Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, Lisa Ellis, Britton Street, as a Madison resident member for a three-year term, January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2021.